Good afternoon and welcome to the thirty first Honolulu Liquor Commission Meeting. We're gonna go straight into preliminary hearings and we're gonna call agenda item number one, transfer application number two one dash two two seven six zero from Love Honolulu Incorporated DBA Canal Market. Ms. Wu.
Aloha, good afternoon commissioners, I'm Min Young Ho on behalf of Love Honolulu Inc. No corrections because it will investigate.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments for the applicant?
Motion to approve transfer application number two one dash two two seven six zero.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two one dash two two seven six zero. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, going into the request, agenda item number two, request number two one dash two two five seven eight from W State Waikiki LLC doing business as Wolfgang Steakhouse. Hello. Please identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Suguru Ishiguro from Wolfgang, I'm in W State Waikiki LLC. And yeah, I'd like to submit the application for the permanent use for the Lani area.
Sorry, sir, could you go ahead and spell your name for the record for the hearings reporter?
My, the first name is Suguru, S U G U R U. And my last name is Ishiguro, I S H I G U R O.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have any questions for the request?
Hearing no questions, motion to approve request number two one dash two two five seven eight.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two five seven eight. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Ishiguro.
Thank you very much, thank you everyone.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, request number two one dash two two seven 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 from the Pioneer Club LLC doing business as the Plaza Club.
Hi, this is Koby Kisaba on behalf of the Pioneer Club.
I'm sorry, can you speak up and can you also spell your name?
Hi, Koby Kisaba, C O L B Y, last name K I S A B A, representing the Pioneer Club.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two seven seven seven.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the request number two one dash two two seven seven seven. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number four, request number two one dash two two eight zero four from Aloha Beer Company. Doing business as Aloha Beer Company. Mr. Shin Sato.
Good afternoon commissioners, Ross Shin Sato, authorization for Aloha Beer Company LP and also present is Dave Campbell.
Good afternoon.
Also presents Keith Kiuchi representing Bangkok Inc.
Thank you gentlemen.
I have a question for Mr. Kiuchi, what is your client's position on the request?
You know, I've talked to administration about this Commissioner Miyashiro and I don't think, I don't think we have much of a way of opposing it because my client presently does not have a lease for the premises. She wanted to leave the license there and to change a location. But even under the best of circumstances, we would have to accomplish the change of location and that likely isn't gonna happen in five or six months. So I think under the rules, the commission can cancel her license because she does not have the lease, nor does she have the fee simple interest. She wanted to keep the license to change the location, but I think what we're gonna have to do is apply for a new license at the new location and ask the commission's permission going forward. Because I frankly, after reviewing the rules, I kind of don't see a whole lot of options and I've talked to administration about this as well. Because we cannot assert we've got a lease or an ownership interest.
Okay, thank you very much and I appreciate you participating in this agenda matter.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It moved in second to convene into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye, we are now officially in executive, we are now in the executive session. Thank you, Ms. Harani. Back, I'm gonna call the agenda item again, we're gonna call agenda item four, request number two one dash two two eight zero four from Aloha Beer Company. Alright, motion to approve request number two one dash two two eight zero four.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two eight zero four. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried, the request is approved. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now in, let's see. Commissioners, go ahead.
Sorry Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items five through ten inclusive.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the adoption of decision in order for agenda items five and ten, five through ten. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, we are now gonna head into adjudication hearings for agenda items number, oh, let me call agenda item number eleven. Nineteen thirty eight in Indosign Queen Mew. Anybody here for agenda item eleven?
Yes, my name is Kevin Alki, I'm the owner of the restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Alki.
And good afternoon Chair members of the commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Paige Ogata. On or about November twenty first, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash twenty nine COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated October twenty, two thousand twenty.
Mr. Alki, how do you wish to plead?
Guilty.
Motion to accept the guilty plea?
Second.
In second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item number eleven, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Vote aye, motion carried.
I just wanted to explain. Hold on, Mr. Ogata, Ms. Ogata, what is your recommendation?
This is the first violation, if the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And can you tell us the nature of the factual basis for the charge?
The factual basis of the charge is that the licensee failed to enforce the requirement that patrons wear masks at all times other than when they are eating and drinking and the maximum of five patrons per table rule.
Thank you, Mr. Ogata, did you wanna comment or provide an explanation to the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain that, you know, my restaurant has been very diligent on temperature checks, on the five foot, you know, the six feet social distancing and, you know, the tracing papers, we were doing all that. In this incident, it's in a hallway of a, there was two tables, you know, in a, kind of like a small hallway area and they were celebrating their birthdays and when they started celebrating birthdays, the two tables ended up combining together and, and, yeah, they didn't have their mask on and we didn't have enough time to separate them and stop them and that's, that's what happened, but it was isolated situation and we're, we've learned from this and we're going to be more diligent on making sure that the rules are being held up in the restaurant.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ogata, do you have anything further to add?
I have nothing further to add in terms of the nature of the violation, but I will note for the record that this is this licensee's first violation ever.
Okay, thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item eleven.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number eleven, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min. Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Alki.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item twelve from Broken Boundary Brewery.
Good afternoon commissioners, my name's Christopher Cook, last name spelled C O O K.
On or about December tenth, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated November nineteenth, two thousand twenty. In violation, I'm sorry, in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii Revice Statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, how do you wish to plead?
I plead.
Motion to accept the guilty plea for agenda item twelve.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item number twelve, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried.
Ms. Ogata, what is your recommendation?
The recommended fine is six hundred fifty dollars total, this is the first violation of this type, but the allegation is that there was liquor available for consumption after hours, fifteen minutes after hours, so that's an additional one hundred fifty dollars added on to the base of five hundred.
And at this time, the order prohibited service of alcohol after ten P M?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook, do you have any comment or explanation?
I can explain, first of all, I take full responsibility because it's played by my investigator, Homer Towne Blue, when we received the liquor permit. It's my responsibility to know all the rules, I'm actually being implemented and I failed in that. I apologize. What was going on is we had no customers, at least in the way that I conceptualize customers, it was an employee who had worked a long shift, I was enjoying a beer after the shift and that was after ten o'clock. It's explained to me that an off-shift employee counts as a customer, which is the part of the rule that I was ignorant of at the time, I've changed my policies and educated my staff and will make sure that this doesn't happen again. I just want to say we take seriously all the policies that come down from the commission. We understand the necessity of maintaining a safe environment during COVID, we're dedicated to that, I apologize for the infraction.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Cook, motion to approve the recommended fine of six hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twelve.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the recommended fee of six hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twelve, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro. Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Any questions, have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number thirteen, Frog House Restaurant.
My name's Jenny B. on Frog House Restaurant, my last name is B S M Boy A S N F U S N A.
Charge one, on or about December five, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated November nineteenth, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii Revice Statutes. Charge two is on or about December five, two thousand twenty, at twenty-two thirty hours in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Bay, how do you wish to plead to charge number one?
Guilty.
And how do you wish to plead a charge number two?
Oh, not guilty.
Okay, we're gonna, as to charge two, we're gonna schedule a contested hearing so you can present evidence on the charge itself, okay? But for charge number one, we're gonna go forward with what's called the penalty phase. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Ogata, what is your recommend, I'm sorry, we didn't move on this, right? I got ahead of myself, motion to accept the guilty plea for charge number one on agenda item thirteen.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item thirteen, charge number one, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, what is your recommendation for charge number one?
My recommendation for charge number one is eight hundred dollars. They had liquor available for consumption after ten o'clock, thirty minutes after ten o'clock.
Okay, can you just for the record, let the commission know how you got to eight hundred dollars, please?
It is the first violation of this type, so a five hundred dollar base fine and the standard that we have applied is ten dollars for every minute after, after the supposed closing time, excuse me. So they were thirty minutes after closing time, so eight hundred dollars total.
Thank you, Ms. Bay, do you have any comment, explanation regarding charge number one?
Um, we're having a dinner with our core employees and we end up before, five minutes before the commission came and that's when we open up first bottle. And we was gonna finish up to that and I wasn't too sure, I explained, but it wasn't a customer, it was our employee, just wanna have one shot of drink and he's gonna finish it all up and I'm got into trouble by doing that. I do apologize that inconvenience because and this is our first offense and I've learned great lesson on behalf, so I wish because I have some mercy on this and I'm reduced the payment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ogata, do you have any comment?
I have nothing to add, this is the first violation of this type and the previous violation on this license occurred in two thousand eight.
Okay, thank you, my motion is to prove the recommended fine of eight hundred dollars for charge number one for agenda item thirteen.
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of eight hundred dollars for agenda item thirteen, charge number one, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
And for number two, my motion is to continue, charge number two of agenda item thirteen to next available for contested hearing.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item thirteen, charge number two, to the next available date set for a contested hearing, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Bay. Okay, calling agenda item number fourteen, Han Yang Restaurant.
Hello, I'm actually gonna speak on behalf of my dad, my dad is here for Diva Cho, my name is Grace Cho, last name spelled C H O, cat, hat, October. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my dad only because I'll be acting as translator.
Thank you.
On or about November fourteen, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee whether in existence at the time of issue of license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, emergency order twenty twenty dash twenty nine COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier two dated October twenty, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii Revice Statutes.
Ms. Cho, before I ask you how you wish to plead, do you wanna translate that for Mr. Cho?
Yes, with the Yes.
Okay, how do you wish to plead?
No contest, sir.
Thank you, motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item fourteen, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, your recommendation, please?
The recommended fine for this is six hundred seventy dollars, this is the first violation of this type, so the base is five hundred dollars. The violation is having an open container for, of alcohol available for service after ten P M, seventeen minutes in this case, so an additional one hundred seventy dollars on top of the five hundred.
Ms. Cho, I'm gonna ask if Mr. Cho wishes to comment, but if you want, please translator interpret what the prosecutor's recommendation is?
Of course. My dad does understand this is ten to seventy dollar fine, when there is an opportunity, he just wishes that I provide the explanation.
You can do so now.
Thank you, sir, so just to give a little bit of context, our restaurant, my father's restaurant closes its doors at Han Yang on the night of what happened, they kept the door open only because right now they're trying to conserve on energy costs and therefore they leave the door open to turn off the A C. At the time when the commissioner did come in, there were no customers present, the only three people that were present was my father, my aunt who does the accounting work and is also an employee as well as her husband, which is my father's brother-in-law. The offense that they're speaking of is that there was an empty Bud Light beer bottle next to the table where they were finishing up their paperwork. At the end of the night, my father and my aunt, again, who is not only the cashier but also serves as an accountant, were finishing up their paperwork, but there were no patrons in the restaurant and my father was not drinking from the bottle, but it was empty but open. And so we, you know, after just talking with him, because we are a small mom-and-pop restaurant, we do our best to comply by everything that's been mandated, practicing social distancing, making sure that there are five or less people per table and, you know, they are kind of a small mom-and-pop restaurant, so they have been, you know, suffering from this pandemic and so at this time, because it is the first time of offense, we are requesting if there can be a reduction in the fine costs also because they were supposed to, the next day they had to close their doors, so there was also a loss of business on that part. So if possible, that's kind of what we were hoping to ask for.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ogata, do you have any further comment?
They were shut down for twenty-four hours, it appears that they did comply with that twenty-four hour shutdown and on this license, there had been, prior to this, there had been no licensing or violations in ten years.
Okay, thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of six hundred seventy dollars for agenda item fourteen.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the recommended fine of six hundred seventy dollars for agenda item fourteen, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Cho.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number fifteen, Hibiscus Club.
Good afternoon commissioners, Mark Kawata for WCDL Ventures LLC, the Hibiscus Club.
Thank you, Mr. Kawata.
On or about September nineteenth, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee whether in existence at the time of such license, if issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, violating the terms of the office of the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu's emergency order number twenty twenty dash twenty-six, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus amended second stay-at-home, work-from-home order dated September eighth, two thousand twenty, in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii Revice Statutes. Charge two is on or about September nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at twenty-two oh four in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on premise in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-two point two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Kawata, how do you wish to plead the charge number one?
Thank you, Mr. Miyashiro, not guilty.
And how do you wish to plead the charge number two?
Not guilty as to count two also.
Okay, thank you, motion to continue agenda item fifteen, both charges one and charge two to the next available for contested hearing.
Actually, I'm sorry to interject, Chair and Commissioners, Mr. Kawata and I talked and we're going to actually request a date on this one of May sixth.
Ms. Ray, can we accommodate the request for May sixth?
I believe so, we've, we're taking care to schedule only one contested matter per, per agenda, so this will just be noted and we'll make that accommodation.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Kawata, just to confirm, you're okay with that date?
Yes, I am and thank you for accommodating me, my trial schedule starting May twenty-fourth picks me, books me all the way through then to June, so thank you very much commissioners and Ms. Ray.
Sure, motion, let me amend my motion, motion to continue the agenda item fifteen, both charges one and charge two for a contested case hearing on May sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
Second.
Then second to continue agenda item fifteen to May sixth, two thousand twenty-one for a contested hearing for charges one and two, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, see you, Mr. Kawata.
Thank you everyone.
Okay, calling the next agenda item, agenda item number six. Okay, calling the next agenda item, agenda item number sixteen, The Night Hawk.
Good afternoon. My name is Jill Miyashiro, M-I-Y-A-S-H-I-R-O.
Um, for the record.
For the Night Hawk, I'm sorry.
Thanks. And for the record, we're not related, are we?
I don't think so, no.
Ms. Zagata, if you could read the charge, please?
On or about December four, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier-two dated November nineteen, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Ms. Miyashiro, how do you wish to plead?
Guilty.
Motion to accept the guilty plea?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the guilty plea for agenda item sixteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Zagata, what is your recommendation?
The recommendation for this is one thousand dollars total. This is the second violation of this type. Um, the base fine is seven hundred fifty dollars and they had alcohol out twenty-five minutes after closing for an additional two hundred fifty dollars, making one thousand dollars total.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miyashiro, do you have any comment or explanation?
Basically, it was, I mean, we, we didn't clear everybody out in time. Um, we're understaffed. It's, you know, we're a small business. We, we just opened. Um, so, you know, I, we understand it is our fault for not clearing out everybody on time. Uh, we weren't selling alcohol um for consumption. It was just, we weren't able to clear, clear the room. And so now we have implemented stricter policies in order to make sure um this doesn't happen again.
Okay, and I am concerned that this is the second violation of a similar type.
I, I know. I completely understand. It's, it's again, it, it, it really has to do with our staffing and um, you know, we, we are, we are getting busier, so we do plan to hire more staff. I, I've made sure that now the cooks come in and help, because usually the cooks are in the kitchen. And I, I have asked them to please help clear the room, clear all the glasses, make sure everybody's out of the restaurant um up prior to ten o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Zagata, any further comment?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item sixteen.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of a thousand dollars for agenda item number sixteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
The vote I, motion carried. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seventeen, The Night Hawk.
Again, Jill Miyashiro, M-I-Y-A-S-H-I-R-O, uh for The Night Hawk.
On or about November thirty, two thousand twenty, and or during the period from November thirty, two thousand twenty to December nineteen, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Ms. Miyashiro, how do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Then second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number seventeen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Zagata, what is your recommendation?
Recommendation is a two hundred fifty dollar fine. This is a first violation of this type.
Thank you. Ms. Miyashiro, do you have any comment or explanation on this charge?
Yes, I do. Um, so in this situation, we were not aware that this, that we needed to submit this employee list. Um, after the first, or actually, I'm sorry, the second shutdown, we were not receiving mail at the restaurant. And so we, you know, I know you, you, you get that through the mail. And so when, when we recited, um, I believe uh they spoke to the, the investigator and they told us to just, you know, contact your office um the following week and to kind of get it all sorted out. Um, so which we did. Um, I, um, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday, I had called the office and um they were able to send me the list and we just had to sign off on it, because there was no changes. Um, and then we, we emailed it back um shortly thereafter. And I believe now it's, uh, I got, I did get confirmation uh right after we sent it that it's filed. And we also changed our address to make sure, because we're still not getting mail at the restaurant. And it ha- it really has to do with, I think, the businesses in that area not being open. And so um, um, I, I'm, I'm hoping that you can understand that it wasn't something we were trying to do, like, you know, we're, we're trying all directions, because we didn't know that we had to submit this list.
Okay. Thank you for your common explanation. If I recall correctly, you folks did have counsel to help you with the license. I'm not sure if you're still working with counsel, but in addition to that, to educate yourself as a new licensee, you can always call on the administration for any guidance or assistance. And on our webpage, we do provide a lot of information. So if you are endowed in what your obligations are, I would suggest you reach out to your counsel or the administration or both and make sure you're in compliance, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for charge number, I'm sorry, agenda item seventeen.
Second.
It's been second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for agenda item seventeen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Also vote I, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. 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 Miyashiro. It's been calling agenda item number eighteen, four, four one Vietnamese cuisine.
We're starting to have some difficulties. We might wanna take a short recess to uh fix this.
I agree.
I think it's, you think it's Gannabon's system?
Is my system?
Yeah, I think so. We think so.
It's mine?
Yeah.
Is it, is it the connection? Is it the connection with the sound?
I think, um, Doug suggests that you exit and then log back in.
Hey, you're breaking up.
Yeah.
Let's take a short recess.
Okay, hopefully that remedied the issue. Is everything better on you guys then? Yes? Okay, very good. I'm gonna recall the um agenda item. We're gonna call agenda item eighteen, four one Vietnamese cuisine. Hello, sir.
Hello, I am Philip Bo and uh I am a manager in my restaurant, four one Caplet. And today I come get the hair, um.
Can you um, can you kindly say your name and spell it for the record?
Uh, my name Philip Bo. And we work in my restaurant, the four one Caplet.
Okay, I think that's clear.
Yeah, could you, could you please spell your last name? We got Philip.
Uh, my last name Bo, V, look like vacation, O, O one.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
On or about November twenty-four, two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of the issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to wit emergency order twenty twenty dash thirty, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier-two dated November nineteen, two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statute.
Mr. Bo, how do you wish to plead?
Uh, yes, uh, some, we got, got, got the, the smart in the um uh relation with my customers. Sometimes they just taken up right now.
Can I, can I stop you there?
Yes.
I, I need you to first enter a plea. You can accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
Uh, okay.
What would you like to do? Let me go over there again. You can accept the charge, you can deny the charge, or you can plead no contest.
Uh, yeah, accept the job because.
Okay, hold on one second.
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I hear you correctly. You're gonna accept the charge?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to accept the plea for agenda item eighteen?
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea for agenda item eighteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Zagata?
This is the first violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars and the basis of the violation is not having contact tracing information.
Thank you. Mr. Bo, you are, you can explain or comment if you wanted this time?
Sure. Um, sometimes we got a little smart thing, the relation of my customers. Sometimes we got um, um, uh, the chicken book right on my door. But sometimes we busy with just take care of another customer. That's why we never check in the chicken book. The customer, they write down everything, but sometime forgot the address. That's why we got um from a liquor commission team to come and check in and that without the address. That's why we got the relation smart thing, that's right. But I, um, the usually, the usually the weather customer coming, I tell them to just write down everything, the full, food thing look like the, the time, the party, um, the phone name or address something, but they write down without, sometime without a phone, sometime without the address. That's why we, we, we no more time check in uh, check in book, uh, write there. That's why I, I, that's why sometime we, 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 we have a little for uh for my customer got the accident uh on that, that's right.
Okay. And so after this citation, have you and your employees been making sure that your contact information filled out like customers is accurate and complete?
Sure.
Okay, I wanna make sure you don't get another citation, so please make sure you check all that information and otherwise comply with our liquor commission rules, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item eighteen?
Second.
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda it, number I, number eighteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
Vote I, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Bo.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling the next agenda item, agenda item number nineteen, Sky Lounge.
Yes. Hi, may the, good afternoon. May the record affect Wayne Luke?
Well, there you are, Mr. Luke. You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Luke. We cannot hear you. Okay, Kendall, come get him.
You don't have with me today.
There we go.
That's always our problems, alright?
There we go. We can hear you now, Mr. Luke. Go ahead.
So we're gonna start from the beginning?
Yes.
With the record, Wayne Luke, attorney for the licensee. To my right is the owner, Yon, Y-U-N, Im, I-M, Chon, C-H-O-N, O-N-E-A-L, O-N-E-A-L. She's present with counsel Wayne Luke. Uh, can we waive reading of the charges of, charge one? And enter a plea of no contest?
What's your inclination or intention for charge number two, Mr. Luke?
Oh, we're gonna plead no, uh, we're gonna waive reading and plead no contest also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one and two for agenda item nineteen?
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item nineteen for charges one and two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Zagata?
Recommended fine for charge number one is five hundred dollars. It is also a first violation. And same for charge number two, five hundred dollars as a first violation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Luke, do you wanna provide an explanation for?
Number one, excuse me, number one, we did have a problems with the uh first violation, but it has been cleared up. Regarding number two, the, my client understands that she can't buy a, any liquor from anyone other than wholesalers. She, she made a purchase sometimes. And she has informed me that it will not happen again.
Okay, thank you. And when were the gross liquor sales report um submitted?
Oh, this, uh, it, I, I checked with uh Andy Legapal and she said everything's all corrected. Then it was just, we submitted a report, but it was insufficient.
Okay, I understand. Uh, Ms. Zagata, any comment?
That is correct. The report was submitted on time. It just was missing some information. Um, and if the commissioners have any questions, Akiko Reyes is also here, um, who can answer any auditing questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one and five hundred dollars for charge number two, for a total of one thousand dollars for agenda item nineteen?
Second.
Then second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number nineteen, charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two totaling a thousand dollar fine for agenda item nineteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
So vote I, motion carried. Okay, calling the next agenda item, agenda item number twenty, Sky Lounge.
Again, Wayne Luke is the attorney for the licensee. To my right is the owner, Yon Jim Chon O'Neil. Uh, we waive reading of both charges one and two and enter pleas of no contest to one and two.
Yeah, I believe there's a charge three as well.
Right, yeah, okay, and another no contest and it's waived reading.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one, two, and three for agenda item twenty.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty for charges one, two, and three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote I, motion carried.
Ms. Zagata, what are your recommendations, starting with charge one?
I'm sorry. For charge number one, um, recommended fine is five hundred dollars. It is a first violation. For charge number two, the recommended fine is seven hundred fifty dollars as a second violation. And for charge number three, the recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars as a second violation totaling one thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Um, for charge one, what was the basis for the violations?
The basis for the violation of charge number one was service, um, was service and sale of liquor and things when they were supposed to be closed. Um, no dine-in service, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Luke, do you have any comments, starting with charge number one?
No comment in charge uh number one. But that was also, I think, um, a mass violations and a five people rule, which my client does understand and that it will not occur again. As, as for the manager, it, it's, as I said, there's no contest for the manager. She will ensure that the next time, she will have a registered manager on duty and that the time card would be complied with.
And any comments on charge number three?
That's the uh time card, right, issue? That's the third one.
The third one is um.
Time card, yeah.
Time card, correct.
Yes. You ensure that it won't happen again. Yes. You ensure that it won't happen again.
Okay, and I'm concerned about the charges two and three, that they're both second violations. If you could advise or counsel your client to ensure, help us ensure this, these things do not happen again, I'd appreciate that.
You understand that? Yeah, she understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one, seven hundred fifty dollars for charge number two, and three hundred fifty dollars for charge number three. Offered agenda item twenty for a total lift, my math is correct, one thousand six hundred dollars?
Second.
And moved in second to approve the recommended fines for charges one, two, and three. For charge one would be five hundred dollars, charge two, seven hundred fifty dollars. Charge three, three hundred fifty dollars totaling sixteen hundred dollars for violation fee. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Chair members of the commission, I'm actually gonna ask that we take agenda, the um, last agenda item number twenty-two, Smith and King's, out of order. Because our next agenda item, T- um, Tiana Cafe is set for contested hearing.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. So, um, given Ms. Ogata's um, recommendation, we'll, we'll call agenda item number twenty-two, Smith and King's Restaurant and Bar.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi on behalf of the licensee. Also present on Zoom is Samantha Moore. She's the principal officer and director of the licensee. Waive reading that the charge enter a plea of no contest with an explanation.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea?
Second.
Then second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye. Motion carried.
Ms. Ogata?
The, um, this licensee GLS was filed four days late. Recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars.
First violation?
Um, no, this is a third violation. The previous two violations were in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Moore is on because she was kinda frustrated on how this occurred, so I'm gonna let her explain it to the commission.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Hey commissioners, um, so for this particular incident, I did not wanna be late. Um, I actually had registered um, properly online to do it online. Um, when I had got the temporary password, of course, I waited to, way too late. But being on time to um, file, I was waiting to the last day. Um, on the last day, um, I do have proof that I tried to reset the temporary password and then I still couldn't get in. And then I, um, I was like, okay, I'll just go ahead and drop it off to the office. Um, then I got news that the office was closed and that the extension would be um, four days. Um, I got an email from somebody at the commissioner's office, um, saying that I was late. I se- ended up sending it without a signature. Um, during this time, I'm trying to do my grease trap. I'm currently closed right now. It is just me and my business. Um, I really did try. I, I don't like being on this um, side of the table, getting in trouble. I didn't want this to occur. It was just the way that things unfolded for me. I'm managing my time so closely together right now, um, preparing for, uh, in order to prepare for my shutdown. Now I am shut down. Um, but I'm just asking for any leniency because I, I cannot um, afford this fine. Um, and it was unintentional. I really tried my best um, to get logged in beforehand.
Thank you. Ms. Ogata, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I, I have one other co- comment. Um, as the com- as some members of the commission know, this licensee had several violations in the past, but she's really cleaned up her act, so to speak. And violations since then have been few and far between. Um, those older violations were be- were for being out of class and corrected that by changing the license. Uh, that's in large part why she wanted to make the statement to the commission, because she's taken pretty extraordinary steps in not being subject to any type of adjudication here, so, but just had that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ogata, do you have any uh, comments or?
Um, I did get some information from Akiko Reyes in the auditing section. Um, she let me know that this licensee set up her name and password um, for the liquor commission information system on July thirty-first. Um, made an attempt to log in on the third, and I believe that's when Ms. Moore tried to change her password. Um, I'm not sure what happened on the third, but her, um, her information was turned in on the eighth of August. Everything was due on August fourth.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. I do have um, an email that I'm able to provide to the commissioners of resetting my password on seven thirty-one, twenty twenty, um, from the liquor commission. Um, not the said, uh, the fourth date. Um, on that date of the closure, I, I did try to bypass it and just get online somehow, and that was not the case. And then with the closure, the following week, um, my time is so managed, um, with the gr- doing the grease trap right now. So I'm able to submit that document if needed, um, for the password reset seven thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Okay, that's not necessary. Thank you. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty-two?
Second.
It's been moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-two. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannabon.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Keith and Ms. Moore.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to um, agenda item number twenty-one, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke.
Afternoon, members of the commission. I'm Matthew Chung. I'm the attorney for the licensee, Tiana Cafe and Karo, Karaoke LLC. To my right is Tina Tran. She is a member of the LLC.
Thank you. Um, I understand that your um, client wishes to proceed with a contested case hearings, Mr. Chan?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ogata, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I am.
Okay, before I provide housekeeping rules to uh, the parties, um, Ms. Harai, do we need to take care of any administrative matters, procedural matters, to make sure that we conduct this hearing fairly and in an orderly manner?
Um, I, I don't believe so. We have gone through multiple equipment, um, and uh, equipment checks with various personnel. Uh, this is our first time we were uh, actually doing a contested matter with exhibits and witnesses. So, um, uh, we have done our, our absolute best so that, uh, and then had the uh, the licensee and her representative appear in suite one-on-one to uh, assure uh, virtual access to the extent possible. So we, we have tried. Um, I, I guess the only uh, question that we might have, and I'll, I'll say this on the record so uh, Mr. Chung can hear it, is that my understanding is that he intends to introduce uh, as an exhibit, a physical object, um, which I'm, uh, I'll, I let him introduce it, obviously. But the question, uh, if he could start thinking about is, since we're gonna have to develop a record for this, whether or not he would, uh, he would, wants us to use the actual physical object? Or would he be, uh, would a, a picture of some sort of the physical object suffice? And I'm not trying to uh, uh, steer you in any direction, but if you could give that some thought, um, as we proceed.
Uh, do you want my view now, or you want me to wait till the time I introduce it?
You can go, why don't you wait until you, uh, when you introduce it? Because I, I, I don't think it's, it's sort of fair to make you spoil the, the surprise, so to speak. So we can, if you could just think about that when it comes up, um, and either however you decide. It's just that we didn't think to ask that question, um, beforehand, so I'm, I'm doing it now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harai. Um, Mr. Chung, how many witnesses do you plan on calling?
I believe two.
Okay, and Ms. Ogata, how many witnesses will you be calling?
Two.
And the parties requesting an exclusionary rule to be in effect?
Yes.
The witness that we brought is in the gallery room. She is not present with us, um, watching the screen. Unless this screen is out in the main room.
Okay, can we confirm, Ms. Harai, that the witness who is in the gallery does not have access to the proceeding?
I believe that person just was, uh, escorted out of the observer room and may, and possibly is in the elevator lobby, is, is what it looks like. So that individual would not be able to hear or see testimony going on.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Ogata, are, are your witnesses, um, in a location that they can see or hear the proceeding?
To my knowledge, they are not.
Thank you.
Um, before proceeding, is it my understanding that this is the first remote contested hearing being conducted by the commission?
Yes, that's correct. And if you could, in light of that, if you could bear with us, it might be a little clunky, but we wanna make sure it's a fair, transparent proceeding so that you're able to effectively present your case as does the prosecutor.
Uh, thank, thank you very much. I appreciate that. But let me, um, as a preliminary matter, voice an objection to uh, the examination of witnesses where the witnesses are separated from the uh, questioning attorneys. So for example, when it gets cross-examination, uh, there's an issue whether or not cross-examination can be as effective when the witness is not in the same room as the person asking the question. So because of the separation of the witness from the person asking a question, uh, that circumstance dilutes the cross-examination. Um, so to the extent that the cross-examination is not what was otherwise intended by cross-examination, and the fact that the witness is not in the same room as the person asking the question, um, I would object to that proceeding.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata. What, do you have a position on the objection?
Um, my position at this point is that if Mr. Chung feels uncomfortable, um, proceeding with the hearing as it is, and he wishes to move for a continuance, I won't object to that continuance. Um, however, if he intends to use this, his objection as a potential basis for a circuit court appeal, I, and I'm not saying he will or not, but if he chooses to, um, I would request briefing or case law of some sort to show that prejudice was suffered by the licensee.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chan, I'm going to overrule your objection. I share your concern generally as a civil litigator regarding the effectiveness of your ability to cross-examine via a video conference as opposed to live, but as you know, this is not a criminal proceeding. There's no constitutional rights associated with criminal proceedings such as the right to confront your accuser. And, and this is administrative proceedings. So I will take this opportunity at Ms. Ogata's invitation. Do you wish to continue the hearing to some later date? And it might be a long time down the road before we can reset this in a live venue, because we are subject to the current emergency orders.
Uh, if I can talk to my client off the record and, um, be back very quickly.
Okay, let's take a short recess so you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back.
Uh, we are ready to proceed. Uh, can't hear you.
Um, I heard you say you're ready to proceed. Um, I did overrule your objection on the ability or inability to cross-examine witnesses vi- via video. Um, are you prepared to move to continue, or you wanna just move forward today?
Uh, we'll move forward today. I mean, I have my objection, so I'll leave it.
Sure, and it's on the record. Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm gonna go through some of the housekeeping rules now, okay? First of all, both parties will have the opportunity to make an opening statement with the city going first. The city will then have the opportunity to present evidence in support of its case, followed by the licensee. During either presentation, the commissioners will also have the opportunity to ask questions. Both parties will have the opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses and also to present rebuttal evidence with the city going first. Following presentation of all evidence, including rebuttal evidence, both parties will have the opportunity to make final arguments with the city permitted a final argument and rebuttal. Do any of you have questions, Mr. Chung or Ms. Ogata?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, nothing.
Thank you. We will begin with the opening statements. If, uh, Ms. Ogata, please proceed.
Would you like me to read the charge as well?
That's fine, and you can ask to incorporate that into your opening if you wish.
Okay. Um, so I'm just, I'm gonna waive, not waive, but I'm not gonna read the charge. But this is a matter of Tiana Cafe. At approximately one o'clock AM on July twenty-two, two thousand twenty, the liquor commission investigators entered Tiana Cafe and Karaoke located on Nimitz Highway. When the investigators arrived at the premises, they observed a factory sealed Korinaza bottle sitting on the bar, which was cold to the touch. The investigators also observed a group of customers sitting in a booth. One of the customers proceeded to throw away a styrofoam cup. The investigators recovered the cup, which still contained an amber liquid which smelled of alcohol. The investigators took a sample of the cup's contents and had the Honolulu Police Department test the, test that sample for the presence of ethyl alcohol. The test did come back positive. We'll have evidence to support all of my, all of the statements that I have just made. At the time of these observations, the city and county of Honolulu was subject to emergency order twenty twenty dash nineteen, which mandated that all liquor establishments stop serving alcohol at midnight. This is of, I'm sorry, having alcohol out and available for consumption at one o'clock AM on July twenty-two, two thousand twenty is a violation of emergency order twenty twenty dash nineteen, as well as Ho- as Hawaii revised statutes two eighty-one dash thirty-eight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chung. Please proceed.
Um, we'll reserve opening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ogata, please call your first witness.
First witness is liquor investigator Tupuola.
I'm, I will swear, uh, swear him in.
Please.
Uh, do you swear that the testimony you give for today's hymn would be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fair, please have you state your name for the record.
Arthur Tupuola.
And what is your occupation?
Liquor control investigator.
And how long have you been so employed?
Approximately five years.
Were you employed and on duty as a liquor control investigator on July twenty-two, two thousand twenty?
Yes, I was.
And on July twenty-two, two thousand twenty, were you assigned to conduct premises investigations around the city and county of Honolulu?
Yes, I was.
And was one of the places you were assigned to inspect the Tiana Cafe and Karaoke, um, located on Nimitz Highway?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going forward, um, I'm not gonna say the full Tiana Cafe and Karaoke, I'm just gonna call it Tiana Cafe.
Okay.
Um, what time did you arrive at Tiana Cafe?
I believe it was approximately one o'clock AM.
Okay, and were you alone when you arrived there?
No, I was accompanied with investigator, uh, Dallas Estabilio, and later joined by, um, uh, liquor control investigator, Rango, Joseph Rango.
And did the establishment, um, did Tiana Cafe appear to be open for business when you arrived at one o'clock AM?
It appeared to be the, I observed the open sign illuminated and later found the front door unlocked.
Okay. Okay, and can you please describe what you observed when you arrived at Tiana Cafe?
Okay, so um upon arrival, uh, entering the licensed premise through the unlocked door, um, I observed a female individual later identified as a employee of the premises, um Christina Hune. She was standing behind the bar, um, performing the duties of a bartender. And um in front of the bar, I observed two individuals later identified to be patrons of the, of the establishment. They were in front of the bar and in between the two individuals, I observed a bottle labeled Cordita. Um, I noted the bottle to be cold to the touch, which I um recovered and it was later submitted into evidence. Later on during the inspection of, of the premise, I observed groups of individual in a booth um during inspection, observed a male individual later identified to be a patron of the, uh, of the establishment, um, obtained a white styrofoam cup and proceeded to the trash can and discard the cup. I, I went to the trash can, recovered the styrofoam cup. It was a trash can that was open uh with no lid. I recovered the styrofoam cup. It was the only styrofoam cup that was in the trash. I recovered it from inside the trash and um noted to have the amber color liquid.
Okay, um, I'm gonna back up a little bit. When you say Coronita, what is that?
It's an alcoholic beverage, uh beer.
Okay, thank you. And was it in its factory sealed condition when you recovered it?
Yes, it was factory sealed, um, as I mentioned before, cold to the touch.
And when you recovered the um styrofoam cup, was it right side up in the trash can?
Uh, yes, it was.
Okay, and you said that you smelled the contents of the, I'm sorry, you observed the contents of the cup to be in amber color. Did you smell it?
Yes, I uh retrieved the cup from the trash, uh brought it to my nose, and it smelled like a alcoholic beer-like beverage.
Okay, and um can you identify what an alcohol smells like based on your training and experience?
Um, I mean, yeah, through my experience of uh working as a liquor control investigator with cases similar to this and also partial uh consumption of alcohol, I'm familiar with the smell and smell of alcohol.
Okay. Did you um collect the contents of that styrofoam cup for something?
I retrieved, I retrieved the uh, the cup and I handed it to uh liquor control investigator, uh Joseph Rango, who, and I instructed him to take evidence from the cup. He poured the amber color liquid into a glass vial and um and secured it for evidence and I, and I watched him as he secured evidence.
So what did you do with the vial once you secured that evidence?
So the vial was uh brought back to our office. It was later sent off to Honolulu Police Department, uh Crime Lab for testing.
Okay, um, I am, I'm sorry, when you say it was sent off for testing, what were they testing for?
Uh, for alcohol to confirm its contents that it was alcohol.
Okay, um, and did you receive results from the Honolulu Police Department?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and do you know what the contents of that container were?
It confirmed that it all was alcohol.
Okay, um, I'm gonna share my screen very briefly. Okay, can you see um what's on the screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Ogata, hold on one second. Before you proceed with your questioning, Mr. Chung, can you see the document that's being shared?
Uh, yes. I can see portions of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. So this has been marked for identification as exhibit one. I'm gonna scroll down. Does this document look familiar to you, um, Investigator Tupula?
Yes, that's the um worksheet that we send out to Honolulu Police for testing.
Okay, and can you see where it says premises?
Yes.
Um, and can you confirm that it does in fact say Tiana Cafe?
Yeah, yes, it, it says Tiana Cafe.
And the time and date of violation?
Yes, uh, one o'clock, uh, July twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Okay, and I'm gonna scroll a little bit more. This is continuation of exhibit one for identification. Can you um, can you see what's on the screen still?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And can you tell me, um, if you recognize this document?
This is usually the document that we get back from Honolulu Police Department that confirms that the content that we sent over has alcohol.
Okay, um, and then under results and conclusions, can you please read what it says?
Says item two liquid contains ethyl alcohol greater than half or one percent by volume ethyl. Alcohol is consumable alcohol found in alcoholic beverages.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask that you look at, um, closer to the top. It says agency case number. Do you see where it says that?
Yes.
And the NOV number?
Yes.
Okay, and can you confirm that it matches with the NOV number on the first page of this work request? Of, of exhibit one labeled work request?
Yes, it is. It's the uh notice of violation that I issued.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, I'm gonna move exhibit one into evidence.
Mr. Chung, any objection?
Uh, void there.
Um, we don't entertain void there, Ms.
Uh, I'll object because the notice of violation number contained on the uh alcohol analysis from HPD is in fact the notice of violation of the charge that was canceled by the liquor commission prior to the hearing.
Okay, I don't understand that as a legal objection. Is there no legal objection?
Well, let me explain. There were two notice of violations that were issued on July twenty-second by Mr. Tupula. One was related to the unopened Coronita bottle. The other one was related to the uh styrofoam cup allegedly containing um alcohol. The notice of violation for the Coronita bottle, if you look at the two notices of violation is in fact NOV two oh seven two uh five five four. Excuse me, let me look. Two seven seven five four is the notice of violation for the Coronita bottle, which is liquor readily available after hours of business. That charge was canceled by the liquor commission at the time they issued the notice of hearing on the two charges. So I would object uh to the submission of the forensic uh analysis in that it appears to be an, be the analysis of the liquor contained in the Coronita bottle for a charge that's not presently in front of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Um, normally I would have um asked you to limit your objection to grounds such as relevance and so forth. We will, the commission's gonna accept the evidence over the objection, which sounded to me more like argument. And you are welcome to present your argument or ask the witness in cross-examination things of the nature you just provided for the record. Um, as you know, Mr. Chung, we do not have evidentiary rules. They are, to the extent we do, they're relaxed in terms of evidence. And we will accept this exhibit one offered by the city and provide or give it appropriate weight in due course. Thank you. Um, having said that, exhibit one, uh, city's exhibit one is admitted to evidence. Ms. Ogata, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, so Investigator Tupula, you said that there was someone behind the bar when you arrived at Tiana Cafe. Did you later identify um who that was working at the bar?
Yes, I did. Uh, if I recall, she was identified for her Honolulu Liquor Commission manager card as Christina Hune.
Okay, and on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty, to your knowledge, was the city and county of Honolulu subject to an order related to the coronavirus?
Yes, it was. We received a, a um emergency proclamation from the mayor's office, uh, twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Okay, and can you please describe the restrictions placed on Tiana Cafe and other liquor establishments by emergency order twenty twenty dash nineteen?
Sure, um, the order specifically stated that licensed premises needs to cease the sale of alcohol or um readily available after twelve AM.
Okay, I'm gonna finish my screen one more time, sorry. Okay. Can you see what's on the screen?
Yes, it's the, the emergency proclamation twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Okay, um, and I'm gonna scroll down. I'm gonna just, uh, what's this exhibit two for identification, excuse me. And I'm also going to just state for the record that I'm not gonna make everyone read the entire emergency proclamation. Um, I just have an excerpt of four pages that was um for identification as exhibit two. Um, so the order, the portion of the order which is most relevant here is gonna be, I'm scrolling down to page three, um, item number twenty-two. Um, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and did you review this portion of the order prior to um? I'm sorry, after it, did you review this portion of the order after it was um signed and signed by the mayor and the governor?
Yes, I did.
And you familiarized yourself with the, this portion of the order as well as others?
Yes.
Okay. And to your knowledge, is this a true and correct copy of what you reviewed in preparation for um your liquor investigations and compliance checks?
Yes.
Okay, on this point, I'm gonna move exhibit two into evidence.
Mr. Chung, any objection?
My objection is based on the process. I don't have an objection to the order. But Ms. Ogata is using a procedure in this proceeding that the, the respondent or the licensee does not have access to. And that is having downloaded online exhibits it intends to use in the proceeding. So in, in my circumstance, I was given no notice that this procedure would be available to the city as well. And if it's available to the city, it should be available to, to the licensee. And that is to upload documents it intends to introduce and have access to. At this point, I am at the mercy of the city um and uh introducing documents I hope I can use because I am, I was not told that I could upload documents to use as my part of the case prior to coming to the hearing. So on that, that basis, um, I would object.
Uh, if I may respond.
Please.
Um, I spoke to Mr. Chung and I, and I emailed him um offering if he had any exhibits that he could either send them to me so that I could make them available or to connect him with someone at the liquor commission to make those exhibits available for the hearing today. I admit that I did not say that I would upload them for him or anything of that nature. But he was given the opportunity to have exhibits presented to the liquor commission for this hearing today. And if Mr. Chung does wish to continue this hearing once again to present additional exhibits, to upload exhibits, um, I won't object at this juncture.
Okay, thank you for um the explanation, Ms. Ogata. Um, let me ask you this, starting with Ms. Ogata. Were, were the city's exhibits provided to Mr. Chung before the proceeding?
I emailed Mr. Chung a copy of the full investigative report and I um outlined for him which portions of the report I would be using for the hearing today.
Thank you. And similar question to you, Mr. Chung. Did you provide the city with your client's exhibits, including the evidence that is not a piece of paper?
No, um, I didn't, and let me explain why. Um, as, as you've recognized at the beginning of this uh hearing, this is the first time it's happened. So uh we, you know, we had no notice how the, the introduction of exhibits would actually proceed. And as, so for example, as I'm looking at the exhibits that the city is presenting, if I wanted to use portions of the exhibits for cross-examination purposes or exhibits that this, the government chooses not to introduce, how do I do it? So for example, uh, if I want to show the canceled notice of violation number two seven seven five four, um, that the city did not introduce, then how do I access those documents that are in the control of the city in the hearing?
Okay, thank you. I, I hear your concerns, Mr. Chung. Let me ask one clarification. Um, you had initially objected that you did not have access to the document while Ms. Ogata was going through the document identified as exhibit two. Were you and your client able to see it via the screen sharing?
You, you're talking about exhibit two, the document being introduced right now?
Correct.
Uh, yes, I can see it.
Okay, thank you. Um, motion to convene into executive session? Second.
It moved in second to convene into executive session. All those in favor?
We.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gannamai.
I vote aye. We're now in executive session. Thank you for allowing us to um, to break out into executive session. I'm gonna, um, we're back now, so I'm gonna recall the agenda item. So recalling agenda item number twenty-one, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke. Commissioner Miyashiro.
This time in light of what has developed and your objections and position that you are unable or with maybe great difficulty cannot effectively cross-examine witnesses with the city's evidence, do you want to move for continuance at this time?
I think um, eh, during the recess, we talked about it. Um, the continuance may be helpful so that the government and the licensee are working with the same uploaded database. So let's say the, the governor's or the government's police report or investigative report might, is something like sixty pages. I think the executive order alone, exhibit K is like thirty pages. If that entire investigative report is uploaded and then the government chooses to use only certain portions of the exhibit, then the uploaded database, if it's available to the defense, I could then pull uh online exhibits that the government may choose not to introduce and use that as part of the cross-examination. But that would take knowing or, you know, uploading the entire police report. The government picks and chooses what it wants to do. And anything that I would wanna use from the government's evidence for cross-exam, I would then be able to go into the database and throw it up on the cross. But right now, because I don't have access to the database or know what has been actually uploaded by the government, then I can't access it. So um, I think the continuance helps so that the government and I can get together agree on what the database should be that both of us can share while we're online. And then uh if she chooses to use, you know, exhibits A, B, and C, and I choose to use D, E, F on cross or on my direct, I would be able to do that from the database that's already uploaded and available to both of us. But right now, I, I really don't have access even though I've seen what exhibit she intends to do, introduce. But I don't have an uploaded entire investigative report that I could then go into and use either for direct or for cross.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ogata. What is your position on the continuance?
Um, I won't object to the continuance at this point. I understand Mr. Chung's concern. Um, my question, I suppose, is more of a logistical one. question, I suppose, is more of a logistical one only because it's the, Mr. Chung is talking about wanting to put everything in a database and whatnot, and that's that's fine. But if the liquor commission is going to continue to request that licensees appear in room one one one, I don't know how Mr. Chung or any licensee, for that matter, would be able to access any information unless he's okay with myself or another deputy um pulling up exhibits for him and doing the screen sharing. So if Mister, if that's the concern, um, my suggestion is either to continue to a time when we can all be in person and that way we all just have the same physical exhibits and we can use whatever we want for confrontation or cross-examination. Or, um, if Mr. Chung and I would, if he's okay with maybe stipulating the entire um the entire investigative report into evidence, knowing that it will go to all the commissioners. And then that way we can turn to certain pages and maybe, you know, he and I can work out a way to bait stamp the document or something so that we know exactly what page we're all looking at. Um, that would be my concern or my question. Um, I don't know that we need to work that out right at this minute, just because everybody's, you know, kind of waiting around to see what's gonna happen. Um, but that would be my big concern, I suppose, going forward.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the suggestions. Um, point of order or clarification for Ms. Raya Administration? In room one 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 where Mr. Chung and his client are seated, is there a computer, desktop, or laptop, something that can be used by the licensee or representative to share a screen and with the commission and the prosecutor?
Uh, absolutely, yes, although to to be fair to us, uh, in terms of
Continue, Ms. Raya.
quality, um, it it would be nice if we had advance notice that that access is gonna be requested. Or uh unless we just are to assume that everyone who is appearing in suite one on one on a contested matter will be given um a a c- a computer or laptop to use to access that information.
Okay, we missed your first part. I saw you speaking, but we couldn't hear you.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, that 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 would be available.
Okay.
Either a desktop or a laptop. And what I um maybe got cut off is uh the request that uh in order to give us a fair shot of having this be as smooth as possible, having advance notice that a licensee would be requesting that, cuz there are some that come with their own equipment is all and prefer to use their own stuff, so it it would be nice to have some advance notice.
Okay, thank you. Um, the commission is going to move to continue agenda item twenty-one. But before I make my motion, um, I want to invite the commissioners if anyone has any comments or suggestions on any protocol that we've been discussing. Okay, hearing none. Um, and before I make my motion, I am gonna order both parties to disclose evidence within one week of today that each party intends to present in their case in chief. And also to the extent it has not already been disclosed, I'm gonna order the parties to disclose the witnesses each party intends to call in their respective cases in chief along with the general nature of what the testimony would be. For example, for Mr. Investigator Tupola, the disclosure would be appropriate if it's along the lines of this witness is expected to testify regarding his investigation, observations, and so forth. Any questions on that?
I have no questions on that. I do have another question, though, I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on a second. Any questions, Mr. Chung, on the disclosures that I'm gonna order, I am ordering?
Um, uh, in in thinking about what you are saying, one of the difficulties is the government has given us X amount of pages of discovery. And that would supposedly be what they would use in support of the case. And then if you look at what they may actually introduce at the time of the hearing, it may be less than than what has been disclosed. So, one of the concerns which I raised earlier is um, we won't know till the time of the hearing what the government actually chooses um to use. Even though, let's say, they disclose all sixty pages, they may actually only choose to use, let's say, six. So, um, are you saying that when you wanna disclose evidence, you want the whole universe of evidence that could possibly be introduced? And then we pick and choose from that universe? Or do you wanna start with a base of namely being the government's investigation as a base, um, and then have that stored and available for either party to use as the hearing proceeds? So, for example, if the government may ch- chooses to use something that is um less helpful for them uh and they choose not to introduce it, introduce it, the the defense won't know until the actual point of introduction whether they've chosen to s- to avoid something that might be favorable to the defense. So how do you get that document that could be helpful, available? Um, uh, if you don't know what in fact is gonna be introduced on the other side? So, that's what I was suggesting, is there a way to put the whole investigative report that's disclosed on discovery both sides and then put it in a common database and then both sides have access to it during the hearing to use either for direct or for cross versus limiting yourself to, you know, certain items that you've given based on what you intend to introduce. And then when something comes up as a surprise, how do you bring up the rebuttal? Um, if it's not been officially disclosed in the beginning or if the investigative report is not be- made part of a of a accessible database?
Okay, I think you're mixing up my disclosure uh order with how to share and present evidence. So let me just back up to what I'm requesting you folks do in terms of disclosures. The parties need to disclose evidence they intend to present at the contested case hearing. And let me give you an example. On the city's exhibit two, at least the document identified as exhibit two, the city has an obligation under my order to provide a copy of that document to you, Mr. Chung. Now, you can look at it two ways. One, is the prosecutor only gonna provide to you an excerpt of a sixty-page document as we've discussed? And if that's the case, um, then I think it behooves you and it's your obligation to look at the entire document if you wanna present any other portions of this hypothetical sixty-page document. Alternatively, the city can provide you with the entire document and not alert you what portion of excerpts that the city wishes to introduce. So you can look at it either way. I believe a proper disclosure and for transparency and for fairness is to provide you what the city intends to produce at the hearing. So in my example, if the city intends to present four-page excerpts from a six-page document, the obligation is on you to determine, is there anything in the other fifty-six pages that you wanna present either in your case in chief or you're cross-examining the city's witnesses? Is that clear? Okay, so for purposes of the disclosure, I I do want you folks to exchange information within one week of today. I recall there's a non-documentary item that is not necessarily tangible that you can disclose. If you could just make it available for inspection, take a picture of it, do what's your pleasure, but I do want disclosures, okay?
That's fine.
Thank you. And then as far as procedurally, I want you to meet, uh, I want you and Ms. Ogata to meet and confer on how to present evidence, how to share a screen, whether it's a shared database. Um, I think you guys can come to an agreement on that. There's a lot of ways to do it. Um, as I understand now, because I don't have the opportunity to be in your room, Mr. Chung, if you have the laptop computer available for you with Zoom capable shared screens, i- i- I'd encourage you to figure out how to use it so you can use it on cross-examination and so forth.
Well, um, I'm in one 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 and there is a desktop here, um, uh, on which I'm getting the Zoom picture and there's a keyboard. So, I would assume that, um, uh, what the city is using to pull up her exhibits is also available to the person on the laptop in one one one.
Oh, no, actually, there, the what I'm using to pull up is on my desktop computer.
Okay, so then if if we can figure out how to get a shared database on the city's, um, hearing format on the the Zoom meeting, then that may be part of the solution.
Yes, and and sure of an agreement on this. I think it is uh important that you have to determine how to present your evidence and how to present information to an adverse witness. Um, this is the new world we have to adapt. So I'm encouraging you figure out, there's YouTube videos on how to share screens. Um, it's available, it's out there, and I'm I'm just encouraging you to figure it out, Mr. Chung. Um, with that, I'm going to move to continue agenda item twenty-one for the next available date on this matter.
Second.
It moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-one to the next available date. Furthermore, been ordered by Commissioner Miyashiro in verbiage provided earlier regarding disclosures. Um, I don't know how we're gonna recap what was said or what was ordered by Commissioner Miyashiro to both Ms. Ogata as well as Mr. Chung, but it appears to me that you guys both understand what Mi- Commissioner Miyashiro has requested for.
Yeah, not a problem. This is a recorded hearing, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's a record even though it's probably on video or something?
Yes, Mr. Chung, but I'm assuming by you acknowledging and nodding your head that you understand what Ms. Commissioner Miyashiro is requesting for from Ms. Ogata as well as you.
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. So I'll take that as you understand. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay. So this has ended the adjudication process. We'll go back on the official agenda record. And um, we'll go to agenda item number twenty-three regarding liquor administrator, if we have any legislative updates.
Um, the only comment, uh, I I ca- I put in the weekly report some information on the two bills that we are following most closely. Uh, tomorrow is the first labral deadline and at that time I'll uh update our tracking table. I am hoping to see a great reduction in the number of bills that we are uh having to uh keep to to watch uh this session. So that's all I've got on that matter.
Okay. Um, agenda item number twenty-four, any administrative matters?
Uh, nothing from me.
Okay. Um, agenda twenty-five, executive session. Uh, performance evaluation of liquor control administrator? Is Denise here? Are we ready to per- to proceed with that?
Okay.
Well, we call agenda item number twenty-five, um. It seems at this point we're not able to continue. We're still pending some information, so I point of order, Ms. Mr. Wright, do we, we have to ask, we have to rule for a, get a motion to continue?
Actually, I don't, I I think, um, uh, because of the way it's agenda, I think you, it's just sort of, you you don't, uh, and Denise, you can jump in. You don't really say anything. You're you're out of executive session. You adjourn the meeting and then you direct and and or you instruct us at some point to put that back on the agenda. I'm not sure it's like a, it's a continued thing as opposed to so Denise, um, if you have a preference in terms of procedurally how to handle that.
We will, um, confer with the right people. Um, you know, we know, we gotta get in touch at Roz and coordinate with Denise as well. And then we will, um, direct it, we'll put it back on the agenda at a at a future date.
Yeah, I think that's all fish, that's all you need to do and then uh adjourn the meeting and just, but you need to just tell us when to when to uh put it back on the agenda.
Okay. So we'll, um, no action taken on agenda item number twenty-five. And then, um, so meeting adjourned. Any other business? No?
None, very good. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.